Hates that she goes, "It's too big."
I'd like to call to order the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for November 3rd, 2015. Invite you to stand if you choose as we offer invocation and then I'll do the pledge. Father, thank you for such a glorious day in our community and we pray that you'll be with us as we consider the items before us and give us wisdom as we consider to make the right decisions for this community and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Call the roll.
Commissioner Perigien?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning is absent. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
We have any words in recognition tonight, Mr. DeFebbe?
I do not, Mayor.
Any on the commission?
I could make a special recognition to our, one of our citizens of Bowling Green, Ms. Audrey Roberts, turns 104 today, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday.
And I want to send out congratulations to both the 7th and 8th grade football teams at Bowling Green Junior High School for finishing second in the state.
Did you have a comment about neighborhood and community services?
I mentioned that it got an award under Public Works for one of the best buildings of the year. Is that what you're talking about?
Mr. Butts?
Oh, oh, Mr. Tim Butts. Butts got, why don't you talk about it?
Brent Childers, Neighborhood and Community Services.
Thank you. At the 2015 ACE Conference in Orlando, Florida, Tim Butts was awarded the Code Enforcement Officer of the Year for his work over the last several years of working with people in the community and trying to find solutions to some of the problems that we face. Also, in Neighborhood and Community Services, our Housing Choice Voucher Program received a high performer status for the ninth consecutive year, so we just got that award at the same time. Thank you.
Congratulations, especially to Tim, too. That's a national award.
Can I have one more, sir? On Thursday, November 5th, I'd encourage all of the city of Bowling Green to contact our mayor and wish him a happy birthday. So, happy early birthday.
Happy birthday.
And we'll be out of town. That's great.
Will the cellphone be turned off?
Probably. You'll be Mayor pro temp, so you take the calls, okay? Thank you. Mr. DeFebbe, do you have any comments tonight?
Second of session.
Pursuant to KRS 618101C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
Second.
By Hill and second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on October 20th, 2015?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien. Is there any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We provide a moment in every regular meeting for public comments. If there's an item, if there's an issue you want to bring to the commission's attention that's not an item for consideration tonight, this would be the time to do that. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the second reading of ordinance BG 2015-34.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the city of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2016.
So move.
Second.
Second by Perigien. This is the second reading. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. The next six items are second readings, so just for the public's edification, we did have a first reading on those before, so we've had plenty of time to read and discuss those items. So, second reading of ordinance number 2015-35.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 5.00 acres from HB Highway Business to P Public located at the corner of Russellville Road and Hillview Mills Boulevard presently owned by Baker and Hilliard Incorporated with Warren County Extension District Board as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Williams. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-36.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning portions of tracts of land containing 0.99 acre from OPR, Office Professional Residential, and P Public to PUD, Planned Unit Development located at 716 10th Avenue and Park Street presently owned by the city of Bowling Green with Gemini Homes Incorporated as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
Hill, second by Perigien. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-37.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of Rush Drive in front of 1895 Cave Mill Road and 2945 Scottsville Road.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-38.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning 40 tracts of land containing 8.0092 acres from RM4 Multi-Family Residential to RS1D Single Family Residential located at Courtyard at Heartland Subdivision with various owners.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien. Is any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-39.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.22 acre from RM4 Multi-Family Residential to OPC Office Professional Commercial located at 528 Chestnut Street presently owned by Robert H. Turner III with Park Street Medical Plaza LLC as contract vendee.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2015-40.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2016.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien. Is any further comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-196.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Sonya Duderick and Ashley L. Remington to the position of Communications Dispatcher Supervisor in the Police Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor.
One of the more difficult jobs in the city is that of dispatcher in our Communication Division of Police Department. One of the most difficult is to be a supervisor in that division, and we're here today to fill two supervisors' promotions. I would ask Doug Hawkins to come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioner, and I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present to the commission two names of those we'd like to promote to this First, Sonya Duderick. Sonya's been with the Bowling Green Police Department since 2006. She comes to us by way of Bosnia. She's a Bosnian native, moved to the United States in 1997. What I find incredibly interesting about Sonya is that when she came in 1997, could not speak a word of English, and now makes her career speaking English, and so that's an incredible accomplishment. She has previously worked at the Bowling Green Medical Center for 11 years as a unit clerk, a monitor technician, scheduler, and pain clinic secretary. Some of that time she did dual duty at the police department and at medical center. She originally was hired to work in our records unit, but then transferred to the dispatch unit in 2011. She currently serves on the 2015 Employee Committee for the Police Department. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration. She is one of our trusted trainers in our communications division, and her husband and daughter are proud of her, although they couldn't be here tonight, they're, I'm sure they're at home cheering her on. Also, Ashley Remington comes to us by way of Franklin, Kentucky, where she came from Franklin to attend Western Kentucky University, where she graduated in 2010 with honors. She has a bachelor's degree with a major in sociology, minor in criminology. She was hired by the Bowling Green Police Department in March of 2012. We sent her to the telecommunications academy where she was the graduate of distinction in her class, which is the equivalent of a valedictorian. And with her tonight is her husband, James, and her daughter, who is not with us tonight, of 17 months, is at home cheering her on. So, we feel very confident in the abilities of both of these candidates and recommend strongly that they be approved for promotion. Thank you. And they are here to stand, if you wish.
Here to stand up so everybody at home can see them and let us congratulate you. Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Order 2015-197.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Tigress L. Thule to the position of Human Resources Coordinator in the Human Resources and Risk Management Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Perigien, Mr.?
Since we took up the challenge to effectuate proportionality in our workforce, we have been gearing up our capability to achieve that goal. One of those important things that we had to do was create the position of Human Resources Coordinator, and we're here tonight to bring that to life with the appointment of Tiger Thule. Mike's going to put her name before you in promotion.
Robbs?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners. Very pleased to recommend Tiger Thule for promotion this evening. She has been with the city since 1998. She started in Public Works as an office associate, then got promoted when we had an administrative assistant position come vacant in Human Resources in 2009. Then when the HR specialist position came vacant due to someone leaving for another job, she promoted to that job. So I think you can see a history of Tiger doing really well in her employment with the city and the city recognizing her talents and her proving her worth. With all the changes that we're looking at with human resources, increasing our recruitment, looking at year-round taking applications for public safety positions and other changes that we're reviewing, became very important that there are some needs we have in our department, and Tiger is kind of the core. A lot of things have to pass through her before they get completed. She's worked a lot of extra hours over the last couple of months, so we very much appreciate the authority to have the additional position. Will say, for anyone that's concerned about city government growing, that we did at one time have six full-time and one part-time position in HR. The part-time position's been vacant for a number of years, so while we're adding back a full-time position, there is, there was a part-time position that was vacant for some time. What we're looking at doing is we've created the HR coordinator position, adding duties particularly pertaining to recruitment, more personal contact with applicants, a lot more record-keeping demographics information, obviously the work with the new workforce, our recruitment committee. Her current position has, is in the process of being downgraded by virtue of a change in the classification pay schedule, and that position obviously will be filled at a lower salary. The new responsibility is being divided between the two positions with supervision by Tiger Thule, so I appreciate the opportunity to recommend her for promotion, and she is here.
End up and applaud for her. Congratulations. I didn't know which of us was going to bust first at the smile on her face there. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, congratulations.
Municipal Order 2015-198.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2016-20 for Lampkin Park Shelter Number One from Carter Douglas Company LLC of Russellville, Kentucky, in the amount of $88,500.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Williams.
In 1970, we built a shelter in Lampkin Park. That facility has seen its better day, and we had to tear it down. We're here tonight to make sure we still have adequate facilities to approve hopefully a bid from Carter Douglas for $88,500 to build a new 34-by-60 all-still shelter in Lampkin Park. We had three bidders, and Carter Douglas was the lowest. Brent is here if you have any questions.
I'll answer questions. It's the largest shelter in our fleet, I guess I'd say. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-199.
Municipal Order approving recommendation from the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to distribute $81,635 of transient room taxes to Mid-South Athletic Conference.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
Couple of comments. As the commission knows, we provide, we provide the authority through the convention and visitors bureau to allocate grants for special product, projects. One of those projects before us is a request from Mid-South to more fully develop and advance our facility so they could use those for play from their conference. That include a whole panoply of different athletic events, including bowling and soccer and a variety of programs, so we're pretty excited about the partnership. This is a two-for-one move. We first have to approve hopefully the Tours Bureau's request for $81,635, and in the next minutes of order, we're going to tell you what we're going to do with some of the money. Brent's here, as well as Vicki Fitch, if you have any questions.
I'll answer questions. I thought about the Mid-South Conference making this their home. We really appreciate the amount of effort that's going into making this a successful project.
We want a comment from Mid?
Sure, come right ahead. This is Vicki Fitch from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you. I want to appreciate your consideration of this request, but I also wanted to introduce you to Eric Ward. He's the commissioner of the Mid-South Conference. He drove from Georgetown, Kentucky, today to come for this, and just wanted to make sure that you all realize who he was, and if you have any questions about anything of this or the conference, he'd be happy to help you.
I know we've been given a lot of information here. Mr. Ward, would you like to just briefly explain what the Mid-South Conference is?
The Mid-South is a college athletic conference that consists of nine full members and 14 affiliate members. Nine of our full members are schools you probably recognize, Lindsey Wilson College, Campbellsville University, St. Catherine College, Georgetown College, University of the Cumberland, University of Pikeville are all members of our conference. They'll all be competing this week in a soccer tournament at Lover's Lane, and then our cross-country championship is at Fillmore Park this Saturday, and then the following week, our volleyball championships will be at South Warren High School. And we are excited to be here and have a home in Bowling Green, and we feel like the items that have been identified in this grant project will greatly improve the facilities that we'll be using, but will also be available for other users here in the community as well. So, we thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Glad you've chosen to make us your home. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigien? Yes. Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-200.
Municipal Order accepting donation for Mid-South Athletic Conference in the amount of $39,355 for enhancements at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex.
So move.
Second.
Second by Williams.
The second part of this relationship tonight involves Mid-South Athletic Conference providing a donation of almost $40,000 to the city to enhance Lover's Lane Soccer Complex. Some of the things it might be used for is to build a press box, to put Wi-Fi in the facility, for mats, even a couple of golf carts, as well as some bleachers. We're pretty excited about the press box that enhances our capability at Lover's Lane, as well as the high-speed connectivity to the park, which we've needed for a while. Again, Brent's here if you have any questions.
I'll answer questions. Call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-201.
Municipal Order approving amendment number six to Lee Square Housing Project Agreement among the city of Bowling Green Housing Assistance and Development Services Incorporated, Live the Dream Incorporated, and the Housing Authority of Bowling Green relating to redesignation of building lots.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Perigien, Mr. DeFebbe?
One of the more viable models of urban development is right here in the city of Bowling Green and Lee Square, in which you had three different agencies, the city, HANDS, and Bowling Green Housing Authority partnered to essentially take vacant land and create a viable new neighborhood. We're here tonight to finish off that vision. I think there's one remaining lot. HANDS has moved on to other important priorities and would like to give the lot they have to the housing authority who would want to put another homeowner in there. Brent Childers is here, if you have any questions about this initiative.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-202.
Municipal Order approving second amended and restated agreement on sharing of revenues, Weldon Pete Park Ground Lease Agreement and Contract and Lease Agreement, all of which are related to the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green TIF Development Area.
So move.
Second.
By Hill and second, Williams.
This day is a long time in coming. We're pretty excited about it, because a lot of us, including this commission and the county and the TIF board, have put a lot of effort into it. I think it'd be most appropriate for Gene Harmon to lay out elements of this municipal order. Gene?
And I'll be quick as I can. I do have notes. I don't want to miss anything here, but also Scott Backer is here. Jeff has reviewed the documents as well, so he'll be glad to answer questions or speak if you want them as well. But if you recall, we'll go back to March of 2015 of this year, where the Board of Commissioners approved municipal order 2015-46. That agreed, that approved that conceptual agreement term sheet, if you recall that, where we agreed to issue a GO lease to the Block Six Garage to help fund the $30 million new bond issued for the Block Six Wrap. That would pay the existing debt of $25 and a half million, settle the existing claims on the wrap, and complete construction of the wrap as well. We agreed to adjust our base revenues in certain blocks to help free up some other money and also some local and state uncommitted funds to free up those funds to help pledge for that debt as well. And then Warren County agreed to provide the city with a legally enforceable agreement to guarantee 100% of the city's payment on that GO lease. We came back in August and September this year, and the Board of Commissioners approved ordinances 2015, 25, and 30. That basically set out in more detail and amended a new local agreement we have from several years ago. That was between the city, Warren County, and the authority. Again, under that, the county committed to issue 30 million industrial revenue bonds for the Block Six Wrap. Again, we agreed to approve, at the first time, a GO lease to actually lease the garage. If you recall, about a week later, we came back and amended that and agreed to lease, in a sublease, Weldon Pete Park instead, because there were some issues with the garage, so we did that as well. Again, the Warren County agreed to enter into a sublease with the city initially for the garage and then for the park. The agreement incorporated language from the previous municipal orders related to adjustments in the city TIF-based calculations as well, and also agreed at that time that we changed the composition of the authority board so that the city CFO and one city commissioner would be appointed to that board. Before us today, we're, as Mr. DeFebbe said, we're approaching the end, not quite the end yet. There still will be a bond closing. I talked to Scott a minute ago, they're looking somewhere early December, they hope, to actually issue that, but all the parties now have at least, right before us tonight, five documents that the city has to approve. There'll be additional documents that the authority and county will approve that the city is not obligated to, but we will at least see those and review those as well. But tonight, you've got five documents that have been reviewed by me, Jeff, also Dirk Bedarf, our bond counsel. We've not yet seen the bond documents because they're still in draft, I guess, being drafted, so we'll see those once they are ready to go in the next few weeks, hopefully. The first one, a couple of them are amendments to existing documents, the revenue sharing agreement and local participation agreement. We've had those in place for a number of years. In fact, these are kind of multiple amendments to both of those documents. Revenue sharing agreement is one that establishes the funds for each block and then commits where those funds in each blocks will go. If you recall, Blocks 4A, 5, 8, 10, and the fourth-floor wrap account, used to be the Hit Sense, but now whoever goes in there, those revenues will be pledged to the Block Six debt. Other blocks were unchanged, are still committed blocks to the Medical Center, there's committed blocks to Western. Those were unchanged as part of this. We did create an adjusted TIF revenue account. If you recall, we adjusted some of the base revenues. We froze some, we froze some, went to zero on some, so we created that adjusted revenue account in this new revised revenue sharing agreement. Those funds were also pledged to the Block Six debt payment, if necessary, although they're going to be quite a bit down the line. Maybe we're hoping that someday they won't be necessary, and if so, this agreement provides that they're not used and not necessary, that at the end of the day, they can be split 50-50 between the city and county. Again, they're going to be near the last of, rents will be first, of course, the TIF revenues, the debt reserve account, and then this will come in fourth or fifth place if necessary. But again, if not used, then they'll be available to be split between the city and county. The local participation agreement hasn't been amended a whole lot. That's the one where the city and county both agree to pledge 80% of their TIF revenues to support this project. We did that way back in 2006 or '07. I think it's the first time we did the local participation agreement. This is about the third amendment to that document. In this one, we added the language, revised the language about the Block Four conveyance, where we agreed to convey it to the authority. The city will get 50% of the proceeds of that sale with a minimum amount of $242,250. And I'll let Brent Childers respond, too, because I think that money will have to go into some type of a CDBG account because that's how we bought that property. So when that property is sold, when we get that money, I think it has to be used for what downtown development or whatever the CDBG requirements are, because that's the funds we use to buy that Block Four property. Again, the authority is the designated agent for city and county for the oversight, administration, and implementation of the development area. So again, not a whole lot of changes in the local participation agreement, but a few to pick up the revisions and the pledged revenues. Before you tonight, we've got three brand-new agreements that will help, I guess, start the final drive, getting all this stuff done. The first one is the general obligation sublease. In this one, the authority actually owns the garage. They've leased it to Warren County. Warren County will sublease it to Manhattan Capital BG LLC, and then that entity will then sublease it with a GO sublease to the city. We will, the authority will still operate and manage the garage, the city will not. We will, the authority will still operate and manage the garage, the city will not. We won't have any involvement with the garage at all. This is more a financing tool than anything else, but we will sublease it from Manhattan with a GO sublease, which means we are obligated to make that payment. If we don't have funds, the GO, and I'll let Jeff jump in too, requires you to increase taxes and everything else to pay for it. We've got a little bit at the end, we'll talk about the next documents as well, but that's what a GO sublease does. It does obligate you to every year of budget money to make sure you can make that debt. The annual rent payments under that debt will be the shortfall in the Block Six debt, and of course, again, it's only the shortfall. The rents will be pledged first, TIF revenues will be in there, the adjusted TIF revenues will be there. Hopefully, there'll be a debt reserve fund when the bonds are issued that will be available for debt payment as well. So this will be the last thing that kicks in, if necessary, any year or twice a year when payments are due, that the city is obligated to. Their lease payments will be that shortfall in that payment. Again, I think I said, the authority will actually maintain the garage and do anything else to it. Now, the backup to that, we said a few minutes ago that there's gonna be a legally enforceable agreement to backstop the city's debt. The next two documents do that. What happens is the county will convey Weldon Pete Park to the authority. The authority will then lease that Weldon Pete Park to the city. That's the first, the Weldon Pete Park ground lease agreement between the authority and the city, where they actually agree to lease it to us for the term of the bonds. It's a dollar rent for the whole term, not a dollar a year, it's a dollar for the whole time. And that lease will expire once the GO bonds are paid, or at least the Block Six bonds are paid, and the city's GO obligation is over. We get the county's commitment in the next document, which is the contract and lease document between the city and county. We will then sublease Weldon Pete Park to the county. Again, this is one agrees to sublease Weldon Pete Park to the city, initially for term ending June 30th, 2016, but it's annually renewable automatically unless they give writing, a written notice 90 days in advance to us and to the state debt officer of their intent not to budget and not to appropriate money and not to make that lease payment. So it is an annually renewable lease, but I think as we learned a few months ago with our annually renewable lease that we had previously, the ability to not appropriate money and make that carries with it a significant, a fairly significant financial risk. By failing to appropriate and make that payment, the county will, you know, potentially put some of their credit rating at risk if they fail to do that. I think everybody thought this was the best they could do under the circumstances, and we wanted a legally enforceable agreement, and we think this is. You know, they can not do it, and if not, we have some remedy rights, but the biggest obstacle to them would be what it may potentially do to their credit rating if they don't honor that and recommit this every year. I don't think anybody anticipates that's gonna happen. Everybody's on board with this. I think everybody also anticipates that hopefully in the next four to five years, that by the time you get the TIF revenues and the rents and get this place complete and 100% rented, that there's not gonna be a whole lot of push for either city or county to have to backstop this at all. But right now, I think Jeff answered, I don't think we've seen the financial projections yet about the term of these bonds. You know, is it gonna be 2037 or a little later? How long are they gonna do? Interest payments only? Those we have not seen yet, so it's kind of hard to tell at this point. I'll tell you what the annual payments want to be, because we haven't seen that. But that should be coming in the next few days, because we've got to have that in place before the actual issue of the bonds. But again, the rent payment that the county pledges under the sublease, they agree to pay us within 30 days of any payment that we make. They agree to reimburse us for the payments that we make. So again, while the city has a general, the GO lease or sublease, this document backs us up in which the county agrees to pay us back any money that we pay. And I'll be glad to try to answer questions. Scott is here. Jeff is here.
Before we ask any questions, I just want to make sure, does Mr. Harmon's interpretation agree with yours, Mr. Backer?
I'm a little disappointed. He can describe in six minutes what it took him six weeks to put together, but in summary, it is accurate. So particularly the two are larger, the revenue sharing agreement and the local participation agreements are just amendments of the existing agreements to conform with the interlocal agreement that's already been proved, so.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page as we go forward.
I think so. So unfortunately, this, because the auditor had an opinion as to how to structure the backstop, even though the Department of Local Government was fine as to how we were proposing to do it initially, we were just going to have the county sublease back from the city, the parking garage, so it all stayed in one chain of the documents, but the auditors had a different opinion.
But it was all this.
We had to create this fiction of doing the Weldon Pete Park to come up with the county backstop. All of this has been run past Department of Local Government. I think they even approved the park leases today without hearing, so.
And the auditor's office as well has had an input into it.
Yeah, even though they're not, they don't have any approval process and shouldn't have been expressing opinions, they did, so we listened.
I understand. Did you have some questions? Anyone have any questions? Let me make sure I understand. Although we're fifth in line, should there be any shortfall, should we have to pay? The county is reimbursing us the amount that we have to pay.
In 30 days.
So we're really capped at the additional, the additional income that the city's putting in is capped at the amount of TIF revenue that we would have been extracting in our adjusted base.
We're committing the same revenue that we committed initially, and those are Blocks 4A, 5A, and 10. Those were unchanged. The only additional things that we've done, we did some of the adjustments to base amounts. Now, we've pledged those to debt payment as well. And if you recall, we had some uncommitted blocks in the original and expanded district, both where those blocks weren't committed to anything. We have basically pledged the local money, the city money that to Block Six debt. We also pledged the state money to be used within Block Six, which could be used to renovate, you know, to make debt payment or whatever. So we did, but these things we've already done. We agreed to provide a little bit additional backing instead of what we already had before. But the answer is yes, it's still all TIF money that's pledged.
Nothing was changed in significant form from the interlocal that you all approved back, or the terms you all approved back in March, that were followed up with the interlocal back in August, I think it was. That's the basis that we worked off of and created these documents from, so nothing of that, none of that changed that you all approved.
Our staff concerned we're satisfied that that meets the requirements that we set forth in the municipal order.
One of our discussions months ago was the quality of the indemnification given to the city. Are we satisfied that the level of indemnification is the best that we can get?
Now, Jeff answered, well, I think this is the best that we're gonna be able to get under the circumstances.
Is equal, is the county and the city as partners equally exposed?
We have a GO sublease, they got an annually renewable. Ours is a little bit stronger, but again, as we learned, it's not a whole lot stronger because it's hard to get out of an annually renewable lease as well.
So they're both are materially problematic for each entity.
Yes. Now, Jeff, he's a financial guy.
In the eyes of credit rate, credit rating agencies, they hold equal footing, so neither one of us could get out of it without serious, serious damage to our credit rating. So we're both tied in.
All we need now is performance.
Execute.
And we share risk.
Jeff? Okay. Or, I guess, I don't know that I want to say oversight, because we had a little bit of oversight. Will we be able to monitor the funds as they are going forward?
Well, I think Jeff answered, two things. We're gonna have a city commissioner and Jeff on the authority board. And in addition, Jeff, with the interlocal, the documents run together, one of the documents gives Jeff the authority to prove expenditures.
I think it was in the interlocal. Yes, the current drafts of the lease agreement and the trust indenture would require approval for both the county and the city treasurers too, for any dispersments. Now, of course, at this point, there's very limited monies in the new bond that will be dispersed for construction, so there will not be very much there, but what dispersments would be made will be signed off by financial officers.
That's a good point. That's what we need to make clear here too tonight, is this new 30, this is not a new $30 million on top of what already has happened. This $30 million would go to pay off the old $25 million, pay off the contractors with the liens, and the rest of it would be utilized to finish the building. So we're only talking maybe $2 million in construction.
Yeah, I think that's about right, $2 million in construction.
So I just want to make sure that's clear too.
Between the cost of issuance of the bond and the interest that's accrued.
Right.
On it, there's very little room, and so, you know, very little money for Mr. Katz off to finish up. He's gonna have to.
There's an interest payment.
His own capital to.
There's an interest payment due February 1st that will have to be covered with this money too, so.
However, that, we just got the state TIF money, albeit six months late again, but that has been sent to the bonds trustee, so there are funds on tap to cover the interest payment when it comes up, and hopefully send some excess for the next interest payment.
Any other comments, questions?
Just so I understand, Jeff, if you can help me remember, this, what we're approving tonight and everything since summer, puts the city in better shape than our original things. Is that accurate? Protects us more?
Leave that we now have a stronger partnership with the county and that they're participating as well in covering any shortfall. We did agree to give up more TIF revenues, which we were not using currently in any of our general fund budget, so that was money we had just set aside to cover shortfalls in the future, but we're going ahead and applying that now in giving the county the authority to use that when they need it for the debt service. So to answer your question, I feel like we have, as the mayor said, capitated our risks somewhat from where we were a year ago, and we have a new partner that we're dealing with as well, and we feel like we're back on the right path, at least I do.
I think so, because before, the city had the ultimate liability if there was a default. Now with the new structure, in exchange for some of the TIF money, the city has contributed to help the debt service, the county has taken over the ultimate liability. So shifted $25 million of risk from one end to the other through this structure.
Other comments, questions?
I just want to thank Scott for his help. We've all witnessed this whole process.
It's been an interesting ride.
We threw in the deep end of the pool, didn't we?
Just got right into the deep end.
All right. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
And first reading of ordinance BG 2015-41.
Ordinance relating to WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green TIF Development Area, ordinance approving amended and restated local participation agreement number four and general obligation sublease agreement with Manhattan Capital BG LLC related to WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green TIF Development Area.
So move. Second.
Paragon, Mr. Fibo.
I think I'll let Gene, she did such a great job before, tersely explaining, he can double terse.
I'll go through this. I don't think they need anything else. The only thing, to make clear why we did the ordinance, this one's an ordinance because the statute required an ordinance for the local participation agreement, and also the GO sublease required an ordinance as well too. That's why we had two separate documents.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
That's the last item on our agenda. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 17th of 2015, and we'll be going to closed session. We'll recess for a few minutes.
No vote expected, Mayor.
No vote will be expected, Mr. Ed.